Still 9:09, and I call this special board meeting of the Wesco ISD Board of Trustees to order. Let the date today, today's date is May the 30th, 2017. Let the record reflect, we have a full quorum. Item number three, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to change the date of regular board meeting of June 12th. Dr. Canales.
To June 13th, I'll make the motion, so move.
Second.
One day?
Sure.
Got it.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Andrew Gonzalez to move the meeting to June 13th. Any discussion?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Huh?
Thank you, gentlemen.
There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number four, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a contract between ERO Architects of McAllen, Texas for design of, number one, roofing improvements district-wide, and item two, Wesco East High School Band Hall addition project. Dr. Canales.
Okay, we're recommending the approval of the ERO contract. ERO was selected as one of five architects for projects, priority projects in Wesco ISD on February 20th, and they were also given the roofing contract then. And then on March 9th, they were, the band hall was added to the project for ERO. The contract has been reviewed by administration and by legal counsel, and we're recommending its approval.
I have a question, Andres.
Yes, sir.
On the roofs.
Yes.
You have 1.8 million, just for roofs.
Yes, sir.
But then you have about, what, 12 schools? That to me doesn't seem like enough money to cover all the roofs on these schools. Do we know exactly what's wrong with them?
Some of the repairs are minor in some of them. The first, the elementary schools.
Who came up with the estimate?
The main department and another architect that we had before to help do an evaluation. On some of them, the repairs, probably like a two, three-year repair on a couple of elementary schools that will need further re-roofing of the entire area.
I noticed that, I know that Margot had some leaks problems in the past, but they're not included in there. Is this just, this is just roofing? Or is it, because some of the roof?
The leaks that we had on Margot were in an area that was not part of the, some of those part of the old project that we did on Margot.
Okay.
And some was not that project.
Well, and were they able to be repaired? The leaks at Margot?
Yeah, there's just a couple that are still there. There were some repairs that were not done at the time. We didn't do all the area, the principal's office, the cafeteria, and the library were not done at the time, so we're not included. There were some leaks right in between the area that we did of the classrooms and that.
And the band hall, Andres?
Okay.
You know, you got 4.6. Did someone kind of study what's gonna, what kind of band hall addition we're going to have?
We're still working on that one. We need to have another meeting or administration.
So the architect will bring the plans back to the board?
Yeah, oh, yes.
So the agenda, just to approve the contract?
Just to approve the contract.
6% is a good deal. I'll make the motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Dr. Rivera and a second by Isidoro Nieto. All, any discussion?
I just have one comment. Andres, could you make sure that our new fine arts director, Mr. Bisson, is included in the?
Oh, no, he is in the meetings, yes. Dr. Cantu and Mr. Bisson, yes.
Oh, perfect.
They're both in it, yes.
Yes, regarding the band hall, thank you.
Okay, all those? I just wanted to add, on the roofing project, the 6% for the school that we have there is an additional 20,000 fee that they quoted us to do a detailed study on the project. But there's several ones that they need to do some core, take out a part of the roof and analyze it, cause to give us an detailed study by when the existing roof will last us, that we'll have to do the entire replacement. That's an additional 20,000. Is that for all the schools, or? The schools that are listed here. Okay. Any further discussion?
Americo. Just 'cause I noticed memorials on there. I know Memorial has like one or two rooms that always gets, is that part of this? Like more, is it just sections of the school?
Yes, it's only a small section every morning.
I believe part of the focus is underneath where we have air conditioning units up in the top.
Okay, and I think in that area, there might be an air conditioning unit. I'll get with you later.
That's why I'm thinking 1.8 is not enough, but we'll find out as soon as we start.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Soon as they come back.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item five, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a contract with PPK Architects of McAllen, Texas for the design improvement of girls' athletic facilities at Wesco High School and Wesco East High School project. Dr. Canales.
Okay, PPK was selected on March 9th for the improvements of the girls' athletic facilities at both high schools. We do have an update on that one that Andres will be walking us through.
Yes, on the contract with PPK, I don't have a hard copy available for, to show it to you. There was a couple of items that we were working with the architects, and they agreed to the terms we did, but they would not include information on their consultant that they had and on the insurance information. And the request of the legal counsel said to wait to, on the approval of that one, cause so we can have the contract with all the terms and sign with their main, one of the main partners to sign it. So I don't have a copy on it here. So we're thinking we'll probably wait till later.
But the attorney has reviewed the contract?
Yeah.
Not yet?
The final.
Yes.
Have you, have you looked at the contract? You okay with?
Yeah, we made, we made revisions to the terms, but what we're lacking is some detail from, from PPK. So the board can actually approve the contract, you know what the fee's gonna be, subject to final review by administration and legal. Otherwise, hold off until we have it completed and you all can, you have it completed.
I'd rather approve it. That way, we don't hold anything up. I mean, with, pending your approval.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew to approve PPK, pending final approval by administration and legal. Any discussion?
The only concern I have, and it's a big concern, is really there's no additional square feet. We've added programs and programs and programs that we still have the same, the same size dressing room for the girls at both schools. So all we're doing here is just repairing showers and toilets and?
Rearranging the wall.
How can you rearrange and have more space?
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's small, there's small dressing rooms. They've been there since when the eighties, when the lack, when the Lackey Gym, Sepulveda Gym was built. That was in the late eighties.
So the plan, sir, if I may, Dr. Rivera, the plan is for Wesco High School, we'll separate the two projects, Wesco High School and then Wesco East. For Wesco High School, yes, you're correct, Sepulveda Gym is basically a wing. It's not, there's not a whole lot of space. There's very little that you can do there, sir. But what we want to target there is, of course, the, the showers, the toiletries, there's a lot of plumbing issues that because of the way they were designed, you're right, sir, from the eighties, it's gonna take a lot of repairs to get those going. So that's part one. The other part, sir, is as, as we're building the fieldhouse for football, Wesco High School football, which is the other project, we're gonna vacate about 200 to 225 lockers from the original football fieldhouse. Part of the project is to renovate that building, sir, and create more space for our girls athletics.
For the girls.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, boss.
For the girls programs, sir, for both?
Yes, sir. We're gonna use, actually, it's, you know, we're, we're working with the architect, we've met several times, and we're looking at how we can revamp that whole building. It's a very big building. Remember, it's got the old weight room in there as well.
Right.
Remember, Mr. Nieto?
Right.
So we're gonna work on, on how we can revamp the whole thing and still make room for the boys, because we still need room for the boys, but most importantly, make more space for the girls.
Because you had to remember when Sepulveda Gym was built, it was built only for basketball?
Yes.
Volleyball and, what else did you?
Golf, probably?
No, not at that time.
Not even golf?
Basketball, volleyball, and baseball, and track.
And track.
And since then, we've added powerlifting, we've added cross-country, we've added softball.
So at Wesco East, or if I may, at Wesco East, we've walked the building several times with PPK.
Okay.
The architect is, is, we're looking at it very closely. There's a lot of dead space at Wesco East. A lot of that space that can be revamped, reutilized, and maximized. And Dr. Rivera's correct, that is a concern. You know, we're not increasing in size, but we're going to use as much space, as space as we can to create more space, more showers, more toiletries, more urinals for boys and girls, 'cause it's kind of, it's kind of encroached into the whole building to try to revamp the whole area.
Let me ask one question. Where do the tennis players like at East dress or, or change? Because all the other programs have locker rooms.
Yes.
And I know that both East and Wesco High tennis teams.
Right.
I'm not sure where they dress.
They dress in the, in the hallway bathroom, sir. We don't have official lockers for them. We just don't have.
Just curiosity.
Yes, sir.
So that's where we need to revamp?
I don't know how much that building was, the one that, the storage facility that is used at East?
I don't know.
Like a Dan Sarra on concrete?
Oh, I don't know.
You know, maybe a hundred thousand. I don't know how much those things cost.
Close to a hundred thousand. So fifty by a hundred.
That's something that we need to look at also.
That's something that we need to look at, if there's room out there on East, on, across the street area, where we're not inhibiting the band or something, but?
I think for the tennis play, you have to build something close to the tennis courts, 'cause they?
Well, there's limited ground space over there.
Problem is, is there, there's a retention pond right adjacent to the, actually, it surrounds the tennis courts.
That's, that can be for future discussions.
Yeah, future discussions. I don't want to hold it up, but.
Let's go.
Yes.
On a personal level, I prefer if we wait till the contract was finalized, but it's, that's for me. But I support the project.
Okay. Yeah. Well, the only reason we're gonna move forward is just due to the time. We don't want to waste any time. You know, I know administration will review the contract. Okay.
Got the motion in a second.
Okay, so a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew to award the contract for the architectural services for the improvements at girls' athletic facilities and at Wesco, at Wesco High School and at Wesco East High School. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries. Item six, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a contract with Gomez Mendez, Science Architects of Brownsville, Texas for the design of the new fieldhouse facility at Wesco High School. Dr. Canales.
Okay, Gomez Mendez and Science was awarded the WHS Field House on March the 9th. We do have this contract, update on the contract for this one as well, that Andres will walk us through.
Yes, the contract with Gomez Mendez and Science for the fieldhouse for Wesco High School is in the same situation as PPK. There's a couple of items that did not get entered by the architect. We discussed him verbally, and he agreed to, and so we're gonna update it. But we didn't notice that this morning, so we didn't have a chance to update the contract to present it for approval. Again, legal counsel had recommended to wait till?
I think so.
We have it all finalized with the terms and signed by the architect. We have the signature, but it's missing a couple of terms. Okay. So, and the, he had been meeting with Coach Salinas and Coach Yojas, and he's made a lot of progress on the selection, the design that they're gonna do. But we still have those two items pending.
What, what terms are we missing?
The, we wanted to get CAD copies for, so that Americo, for example, can access the files on the computer instead of getting a PDF file.
Okay.
And also, the insurance information was not included. And the presentations to come to the board, we said we wanted by weekly visits, reports, and then a monthly visit at the board meeting. That's all, we do that all the time, that's no problem. But it was not included in the, the terms.
Dr. Canales? Can we approve it like we did the one before, so that it doesn't stop the process based on administration and, and legal counsel's approval of the contract?
Yeah. Dr. Canales?
Yes, sir.
And have, we decided on where it will be built?
Yeah, the location.
Coach, will you please?
Just a question, just to?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my guest.
On response to the question, we're looking at the area, the grass area, right? It would be west, right behind the, the new weight room, right, right behind the baseball fence, right in that area. We had talked about the parking area, but we're gonna take up parking spaces, and we don't want to get into those types of issues. So right now, that's the proposed area, sir.
How many actual parking spaces are there?
Hmm.
That the building would occupy?
I don't know, sir.
I like the idea of closing it out the way Mo said, I appeal.
One of the things that Mr. Gomez mentioned to me, the architect this morning, is to, once we, to make up an appointment with the city, actually, to discuss the location, so make sure that they're okay with it. They won't say, oh, you need to have additional parking spaces based on, from what we have.
Okay.
I mentioned that it, we just have a place in the building with another, we're not bringing more people than drive cars or anything like that. We just make sure that we don't have any problems when we go ask for the permit, or they're not gonna delay us with more requirements, so.
And we had input from Coach Salinas and, right, the new coach?
Oh, yes, sir.
We have input.
We've, we've met several times, and Americo.
And Mrs. Morales.
Miss Morales, yes, sir. Matter of fact, we have a meeting on Thursday at 2:00.
Okay.
We're about 90% done with the floor plan. We've, we've visited some, some fieldhouses. We're using Wesco East as, you know, also part of the design. Coach Salinas has visited, we've visited some other, other facilities, and we've kind of put together a, a floor plan that I think is gonna meet the needs of Wesco High School.
You know, guys, we built a fieldhouse at Wesco East.
Yes, sir.
Many years ago. Now we're gonna build one for Wesco High School, but nothing for the girls. So are they taking over, you know, whatever, they abandoned? I mean, we better come up with a good plan and have something good for the girls, too.
I agree.
Good point.
That's a good point.
I want to see your plan. Where are you gonna put the girls at both schools?
Yes, sir.
I agree. So, so move.
Second.
On, on your motion, are you gonna do pending final review by administration and legal counsel?
Same as we did the last one.
Okay. On both item five and six, then, item number six is going to be to the approval to, for Gomez Mendez, Science Architects of Brownsville, Texas, to design the new fieldhouse facility at Wesco High School, pending final review by administration?
Correct.
And legal counsel?
Correct.
Any discussion?
I just don't like the idea of approving contracts without legal taking a look at, finalizing it. But again, I approve of the idea of the project.
I guarantee you that, that our administration and, and legal counsel will, will not approve it without being 100% correct. Yes. Thank you, Patrick. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to procure a new digital scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium. Number, item one, board determination of procurement method of construction that will provide the best value to the district for the project. Number two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received. Or number three, approval of criteria and, or, and number three, not or, and number three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking and proposals. Dr. Canales.
Okay, for item A, board determination of procurement method, administration recommends the design-build method of construction.
And we have listed the criteria in the back and the page, the last, two pages on the end, we have the criteria that we're recommending on the bottom of the page. And whether the board wants to retain the authority to rank the qualification statement that we receive for this, or delegate it to administration. I'd like to provide a little bit more information as to why we're recommending the sign-bill method.
What's the method?
We wanna recommend the design-bill method. Sir? Initially, when we were looking at the scoreboard, we thought that we could go to the buy board of companies, purchasing cooperatives like that, that have companies, all the scoreboard companies are members of companies like that and, and groups. But to get a scoreboard, there's a need for engineering services for the design of the, the way the scoreboard works. And the law does not allow for the procurement of architectural engineering services through procurement, through cost. We cannot go by bid. So it has to be qualification, because architects and engineers are getting hired based on demonstrated competence and qualifications. So what I wanted to recommend is the sign-bill on a two-step process. The first step is release the request for qualifications. Once we get them, we'll evaluate them. Usually, when you get more than five, you narrow it down to five. More than likely, we'll get three or four responses. After that, we put together a request for proposal that we're gonna send out only to those companies that respond. At that time, we'll ask them for more specific on what we want, some of the information we mentioned earlier, and how much it's gonna cost us. At that time, we evaluate that, and then we'll present that for the board. We want to include at that time of the proposals, the option of financing, zero financing under five years or longer term, and we'll use that as part of the consideration for recommendation to the board later on.
So move.
Well, you need the design, design build.
Yeah, we need to, we need to go with design build. I think the administration needs to?
Do I have to wait for BNC?
You want us to rank them, or the board to rank them?
Administration.
And the points?
And then, did you present something for the pointing, for the points? It's on the page form? So then we'll just go with the points that you'll have, with the criteria presented?
So just that, that add to your motion, Andres?
Yes, just add to my motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on, we had a, a long, well, we had a, a long workshop earlier today, discussed insurance and other things. But now we're on the, on the scoreboard. It was discussed that we, we had, the one that we had here is, what, 12 years old? 12 years. And it paid for itself in three years.
Four.
Four years? So we had eight years of, of, of money that, that was profit, and it went back into the school district. And at this point, we're, we're at the crossroads where we need to, to build a new one, and it'll be the same as, as the one that Dr. Rivera had built for us 12 years ago.
Yeah, and that looked great.
It was big back there, man.
Big, yeah. We saw it at the graduation.
Yeah, now it looks small.
Now it looks small.
You know, so, so, you know, going forward, we're getting 0% interest on the project. We're lending, we're borrowing the money, too. Not gonna affect the kids in any way, and I feel it's a good project, so. Anyway, Andrew has made a motion to go with a design build for the method of construction, to delegate the authority for the, for the ranking to?
Administration.
Administration, and to approve the criteria as presented. Is that correct, Andrew?
Yes, sir.
Could you repeat it for me?
Too many words.
Okay, that, that's Andrew's motion. Is there a second?
I got a second.
Okay, there's a motion by Andrew and a second by Isidoro Nieto. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a Wesco ISD logo. That also was presented to us in closed session. I don't think, I'm ready, and I don't know if the other board members feel that they're ready to approve a logo on the presentation, and I don't know, I'll entertain whatever y'all want to do on that.
I'll move to table the item.
Second.
Okay.
I think the, I think Pink Ape's done a great job, but I think I just need some time to chew on it, I think. Maybe hold them up, all three, and take a look.
Yeah, I, I feel that, you know, we've had a long night, and I feel that we need, like you said.
That's a good point, Mr. Patrick, that if they can give us just a sample, you know, like they did with the fences, a bigger one, so we can see here close, and then we can say, you know what, this is probably the best one, you know?
Yeah, and at the same time, let administration, you know, pass it around a little bit more and, and make their, their final determinations.
See what?
But, but I do want to thank Pink Ape for coming out and presenting to us. Sorry for keeping y'all waiting for such a long time. We appreciate your patience, and, but we're gonna table this item for, for another meeting and, and approve the, the logo at that time.
And I think, Dr. Canales, you and your staff can work on that and see which one also you all recommend. Even though we vote for it, I think, you know, our, our people that work for the district should be, have a impact on that. Yeah, they're very good ideas, good planning.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion?
Mr. President, excuse me, we will send you the three versions to, on your Friday's update.
Okay.
I'll have, I won't be here Friday, but I'll have one of the team members make sure that it gets sent to you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Patrick. Is there a second?
I second it.
He seconded it.
Two tables?
Yeah.
So we have a second by Andrew to table the item. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Item is tabled. Item number nine, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a proposal, award for third-party administrative services proposal, number 17-05-36. Dr. Canales.
Okay, at this item, just a couple of points for this one before we enter discussion and possible action. We asked for the best and final offer. It was this past Friday.
Yes.
Today, Mike and I met with our consultants, SWBC, today to talk about what was on paper, knowing that we hadn't seen a full presentation from the finalists, and were able to ask questions. So we knew that there were questions that were gonna come up. So based on the final offer, the best and final offer in our meeting today, what looked on paper was one recommendation. So before we, I guess, before we proceed, we'll entertain, I guess, we'll move on to the discussion and any possible action.
If I may, the, the recommendation that was, that was made here, that I have here, that you don't have in front of you, was based on what we saw on paper at 5:00 this afternoon. Based on the presentations that were done today, we are going to change that recommendation. So we would ask that to postpone it, or if the board is so inclined, they can take action on it now.
Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, our recommendation at this, this afternoon, and we were all in agreement, was for ABA.
The recommendation based on the information we had this afternoon was ABA, correct. However, that has changed based on the information that was presented on the best and final, indicating a 70% discount. However, based on the presentation, that figure may not be accurate. So at this time, we'd like to pull that recommendation and come back to the board at a later date, or if the board is so inclined, they can make a decision now.
I moved to table and, and bring it back to the next board meeting, was June the 13th, which is just a couple of weeks from now.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to table the insurance, the third-party administrative services. We have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew. Any discussion?
Mr. Messi, would that give you enough time? I, I know it's only 13, 14 days, two weeks.
That would be much.
Enough time, sir? Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
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 How many ayes do we have?
Well, under discussion, well, I was gonna say, under discussion, we never got to discussion. You know, the motion was made in a second, but we didn't get?
Do I?
Yeah, just, just one quick question.
Let's go back a little bit.
One quick question. On Mr. Messi, when you were up here, you know, you made a recommendation, and you said, what, what did you say, blue? What was your recommendation when you were up here?
When I was asked what I would do if I was sitting in your shoes?
Uh huh. The mic.
I did say the blues because of the discount and, and because of the large networks and everything. Yes, sir, I did say that. But this afternoon, based on paper, then we had looked at, you know, just what was on paper, and we were looking at the ABA.
So in two weeks, it gives, it gives you enough time to look at everything more precise?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll be able to make a, a good decision for our employees for the district?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Messi.
We just had a good, good three-hour workshop and, on this insurance. And, and yes, the, the concerns were brought forward. I would hope that this board would be ready to act and allow you guys to, to get ready to sign up all our, all our employees. You know, but if this board seems, seems that they would rather table the item, I don't think anything will change. I don't think there's gonna be any new developments, but so be it. The board, the board will speak. So we have a motion. Is there any more discussion?
We've already voted, no, Ivan?
No, we just, we just made the motions.
No, but he called for the vote, and we voted.
Yeah, he called for it.
Okay, so, will all those, and I'm gonna ask for a raise of hands, all those in favor of tabling the item? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, the item is tabled on the, on the insurance. Closed meeting to discuss item A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item one, employment of personnel. Number two, resignations. Number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. B, consultation with legal counsel regarding audit of health insurance. Item number 11, that's when we come back. So the time is 9:38, and this board is going to closed session. Time is 9:56, and this board is back in open session. Let the record reflect that Dr. Rivera left the meeting at 9:45. Moving on to item number 11. We got A, possible action, unnecessary items discussed in closed meeting. A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074.